RPC hearings. This item will not be open for discussion tonight. Votes, motions, or recommendations. Matt Pfeiffer will read a short deferral report. I'd like to share a few logistical points for virtual participants and/or commissioners participating remotely. Tonight's meeting will become available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after this meeting. The meetings will no longer be a live broadcast. The nightly meetings will not be live broadcasts. The YouTube link will become available as well 24 to 48 hours after the meeting. Check the Planning Commission website, please, for further information. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls upon you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that's located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you've spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers at this time. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as an individual and three minutes to comment as a representative of an organization or county board-appointed advisory group. A timer will be displayed on the screen when speaking virtually. Speakers in person will follow the timer on the podium. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. And as a side note, I was remiss at the LRPC meeting to wish our colleague Eric Berkey a happy birthday, so I want to make sure that we celebrate him now. Thanks very much. Happy birthday. And then, of course, I don't want to be remiss at the end of the meeting saying anything about Madam Clerk. Ms. Johnson, we are going to wish you a very happy birthday as well. Okay, so Madam Clerk, please call our first item.
All right.
Oh, it's Tony's birthday. Now look, see? Weird.
On the 28th of August.
Oh, my goodness.
Here in recess, so.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for being born.
Happy to be here.
All right. Our first item for the evening is an ordinance to vacate a portion of South Walter Reed Drive adjacent to lots 94 and 95. We have Mike Kaluski to present this item in the absence of Bessie Erbs for this evening. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Mike Kaluski. I'm a real estate specialist with the Department of Environmental Services, here to present a vacation of a small portion of South Walter Reed Drive. It's at 1816 South Walter Reed. This is just in front of the Arlington Career Center. You may remember the use permit and the vacation of 8th Street came before you back in the June meeting. This is one that wasn't quite ready for that meeting. It wasn't timely to be advertised for that meeting, but we're bringing it tonight. So this is a request by Arlington Public Schools. It will facilitate the construction of the new Arlington Career Center that was approved in June. As I mentioned, it wasn't sufficient time to advertise this for the June meeting. Originally, this section of South Walter Reed Drive was dedicated in 1923 as Bingham Road, and then later renamed as South Fillmore Street, and then eventually South Walter Reed Drive. This portion of South Walter Reed Drive is designated as a type C arterial on the master transportation plan. Physically, the area is a grassy area behind the back of sidewalk. It's not being used for street sidewalk or any utility purposes. And as part of this project, we'll see in just a moment, there's an additional area of Arlington Public Schools land that will be dedicated for public street utilities So here is a plat of the proposed vacation. The vacation is a very thin sliver right here. At the base of the triangle, it's just a little under three feet deep, and it's about 88 feet long, so 131 square feet total. And this section here, this is that piece that bumps out into Walter Reed. That'll be the portion that is dedicated to the county. Here is an overall aerial view of the entire site. Just to give you some context, this is the area of the small vacation. And staff would recommend to the Planning Commission that you find that the proposed vacation of a portion of South Walter Reed Drive is substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan, or applicable portion thereof. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have.
Yes, this was heard before the Transportation Commission last Thursday evening. After the stat presentation, there was no discussion. A vote was taken. The vote was unanimous with a finding that to recommend approval of this vacation is consistent with the master transportation plan. It's probably the shortest item we've ever had.
Madam Clerk, I just skipped over. I didn't see any public comment.
No public comment on this item, yes.
Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Peterson?
I just had a quick question, which was that in the report, you mentioned that there were no easements on this land, there were no utilities. But then in the attachment, there was a lot of explanation about the APS would handle the utilities. And is that just legally that has to be there because we know that there are no utilities there? Is that like in case you start digging things and you find utilities that they would have to move them and rebuild them to county standard?
Yes, that's correct. It's standard language. In case there are any utilities in there, they would have to relocate them before we would perfect the vacation. But there's no indication that there's any public utilities in the area.
Any additional questions? Jim Dear. All right, we're ready for a vote? Oh, no, we're ready for a motion?
We're making a motion.
Thank you.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the proposed ordinance to vacate a portion of South Walter Reed Drive adjacent to lots 94 and 95 Arlington Plateau, being part of the property known as the Arlington Career Center owned by the Arlington County School Board, 816 South Walter Reed Drive, Arlington, Virginia, RPC number 25-014-004, and 25-014-010, with conditions, is substantially in accord with the master transportation plan. It is recommended to go forward by the county board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Striner, it's the second. Any discussion? Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Kieran?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Striner?
Aye.
Gibbata?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Berkey?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Patel? Aye. And so the motion carries 13 to 0. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if we can call the second item?
Item number two is ZOA-2023-10-FBC-33 and N-FBC-1919, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance in specific sections dealing with the Columbia Pike Neighborhood Special Revitalization District Form-Based Code. We have our planning staff and guru, Matt Matuszak, to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a few more slides, so I don't think I'm going to break any records like the first item. But Matt Matuszak with the Planning Division, and I wanted to run through this presentation, which mirrors what you may have read in the staff report that was distributed earlier. And it largely involves the relationship between RA zoning districts and special planning areas that exist on our general land use plan. The presentation really has four key sections that mirror the chronological assessment that staff undertook earlier this year, starting with the Pentagon City area, and then widening to a countywide assessment of this relationship. And I want to end with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and walk you through those changes. So initially, what I wanted to start with is just recent history dating back to February of last year, at which point the county board adopted the Pentagon City Sector Plan. At that time, several zoning ordinance amendments were also adopted, particularly targeting the two predominant zoning districts in Pentagon City, RA 615 and CO 2.5, to ensure that sites within those boundaries were eligible to redevelop per the new sector plan. We also took the opportunity at that time to create a new Section 9.6 in the zoning ordinance that reiterated the policies, objectives, and vision of the Pentagon City Sector Plan, and spoke to specific criteria the county board and the Planning Commission could use in determining appropriateness of site plans that would be coming in consistent with that plan. Since that time, staff has begun to consider several redevelopment applications, particularly in the western half of that planning area. And one of the initial things that jumped out to us was a specific clause in that RA 615 zoning district that speaks to a specific height restriction that only applies to elder care uses. We compare that with the provisions that are in the Pentagon City Sector Plan, which do not specify heights by permitted uses, but rather just more holistically, and identified an inconsistency that we thought warranted a clarification. Similarly, when we looked at the permitted uses, and again focusing on the western part of the planning area, which is zoned RA 615, you can see here across from West Post, formerly known as Pentagon Row, a mixed-use environment is envisioned, surrounded by residential development in the future on that western half of the study area, where both retail and retail equivalent uses are envisioned. This vision for long-term redevelopment is in contrast with the uses permitted in Section 6.1 that govern RA zoning districts, including RA 615. And you can see here how a number of typically anticipated retail environments are prohibited in all the RA zoning districts. So upon discovering this, staff took a step back and assessed if this is also the case with the other RA zoning districts. So we evaluated the same condition at a countywide level in stepping away from Pentagon City. What we found was that the issue consists, or pertains again to the other RA zoning districts. You can see here the blank cells in Section 6.1, where those retail uses are prohibited, particularly the four that are listed on the screen. And what we then wanted to see is whether any of those three zoning districts also correlate with special planning areas that involved earlier planning efforts and may have had additional guidance, such as a sector plan, area plan, or revitalization plan. And through a GIS analysis, we discovered five, including the Pentagon City District, that have such guidance and create a conflict and present some ambiguity that we'd like to clarify through this amendment. So when we look at all four or all five of these, you can see here that certain districts, I think, are more prevalent than others in terms of that inconsistency in conflicting guidance, all of which also have a very specific height restriction when it comes to elder care building heights. This is something that actually stems from a 2019 zoning ordinance amendment. At the time, elder care uses were being introduced throughout the county to a number of different zoning districts. And in an effort to address some community concerns, staff included a very specific provision for height restrictions that would clarify zoning, that building heights, regardless of use, would have a consistent height maximum. So the numbers that you see here, the 60-foot, 75-foot, 95-foot, 70-foot maximum, reflect what's already restricted for multifamily projects in those zoning districts. So simply by introducing elder care to those zoning districts, we are not increasing the permitted building height. They would all have the same limit, if you will. So part of the assessment in front of us was to verify if those five special planning areas did in fact have additional guidance related to those heights. And we did find, in each case, there was not only additional height guidance, but also permitted uses that were broader than that table in 6.1. This applies to the Fort Meyer Heights North Plan from 2008. It also applies to the Green Valley Village Center Action Plan, formerly NOC, from 2004, as well as both Form-Based Codes along Columbia Pike, the commercial one established in 2003, and also the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code in 2013, all of which have taller building height permissions and a broader permitted use table compared to what's permitted for RA zoning districts. So the proposed changes that you saw on the staff report and that I'm about to go over are aimed to establish two realities, that the provisions that are currently in the ordinance still apply and are still relevant, but only for by right development in those instances. However, if site plans or use permits are submitted in those RA zoning districts and fall within one of those five planning areas, they can actually access additional and superseding guidance that is represented in those specific area plans, sector plans, or revitalization plans, many of which are already codified in the ordinance. So the proposed amendment targets really three categories. I'll go through those quickly. Again, initially, starting with the RA zoning districts, the two clauses that are impacted involve the permitted uses and also district use standards, where, if you saw the staff report, we have an exemption that's being introduced that relates back to those special planning areas, and it is unique depending on the zoning district. Not all have the same relationship. In addition, we also are using this opportunity to revisit Section 9.6 that was created last year, and clarifying further that, in addition to building heights and densities, the land use mix itself should be something that the county board considers when assessing the appropriateness of site plans submitted through that new sector plan. Because we are dealing with a mixed-use environment that's envisioned on a otherwise residential part of the plan area, we also wanted to make sure that there was a reasonable density restriction for commercial densities that previously did not exist. So you'll see that in the proposed text language. And finally, just highlighting the permitted uses that are already represented in the retail map found in the sector plan. And then finally, this is an additional element that I think meets the theme of what we're discussing. We are adding elder care use category into both Form-Based Codes along Columbia Pike. This was actually intended back in 2019, when we added elder care to all the other zoning districts, but unintentionally omitted this language from that staff report. So this is kind of just going back to something that was previously intended and using the opportunity to, I think, kind of group everything into a theme of elder care changes throughout the county. Finally, from a review process perspective, we visited the zoning committee earlier this year in June. That same month, we held a conversation with the Crystal and Pentagon Cities Council and advertised the changes at the July hearing of the county board. So with that, just wanted to highlight our recommendation that the county board amend, reenact, and recodify Sections 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 9.6, Appendix A, and Appendix B of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance to clarify permitted uses, maximum commercial densities, and maximum building heights for buildings with elder care uses for properties redeveloping within the Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District, Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Special Revitalization District, Fort Meyer Heights North Special District, Green Valley Village Center Special Revitalization District, and the Pentagon City Coordinated Redevelopment District, all as shown on the General Land Use Plan and in Attachment 1 of the staff report. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, so this matter went before ZOCO. Anything to add to the presentation?
Not much. Thank you, Matt, for the great presentation. The ZOCO Committee was very comfortable with this change.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sarley. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Striner?
Yeah, so I had a quick question about the actual text that, as it appears in the staff report. In Sections 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4, Pentagon City isn't explicitly mentioned. Is there a reason for that? It has all of the other ones in some capacity, but Pentagon City doesn't show up until Section 6.5 in the proposed amendment.
Yes, so for that one, I'm going to go back to a table that we had. There is a reason. And that has to do with that all zoning districts are impacted in the same way. One second. Here we go. So this is where the conflicts and the overlapping of districts occurs. So RA 615 is, I think, impacted by all five. However, the other zoning districts have less frequencies of those situations where they happen to exist in areas that were previously planned. So if you go from 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5, that list will vary depending on the level of overlap between the special planning areas and the RA zoning district lots.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. So one of the community's concerns was safety for senior living spaces in the really tall, higher buildings. And the fire department had said, no, it's not an issue because for senior living facilities, we have different design standards to keep them safe because we know evacuation might be slower. So does that mean for a building that was not built for a senior living facility, in the future, we wouldn't be able to have an adaptive reuse and let that space be used for a senior living space?
It's a great question. It's one that we've, since the July request to advertise, discussed with our foreign marshal and building code officials. It really stems from the way in which those buildings are designed, and typically, that represents a much higher standard compared to multifamily. And generally speaking, if we're starting with a blank slate, that decision is made early on, and the construction typeology and level of evacuation, I think, is very different. If we're going down the path of what you just described, which is more of an adaptive reuse, that just becomes a much more expensive endeavor if you were otherwise trying to adapt from more similar uses rather than going to something that has a much higher threshold. And that kind of just stems from the evacuation strategies, wider stairwells, being able to kind of stay in place until the fire department shows up. There's a lot of different areas in which buildings like that become very costly, and they are basically held to a different standard, but not one that I think lives in the zoning ordinance. It's really in the other codes that still apply whenever buildings like that are proposed.
So if we want more senior living, it has to be done at the beginning when we're doing the building in the first place? So thank you.
And the heights at least have to permit it, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weir?
Thank you. A process question, and pardon the ignorance. Was any thought or discussion given internally to bringing this to either the Form-Based Code Area Working Group or the CPCC? CPCC? CC? I know of one arrangement that it's not, but I can't remember which one it is. And if so, what was the rationale for not? And please don't hear me saying that I think it should have been. I'm just curious.
So we did visit with the Crystal and Pentagon Cities Council. I think that's the CPCC acronym. And they did not have any issues other than to highlight, I think, the safety element of taller buildings that accommodate these uses. The Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group, I believe, in the last year, may have gotten a verbal reminder that this was in the works. But because it was so technical, and because I think it highlighted a process that took place in 2019, but really is addressing a technical omission from that report, we didn't feel that it warranted another meeting to discuss.
It's entirely possible that Ms. Sante mentioned it to me or mentioned it in a meeting, or you did, and that...
It wasn't recent, but I think...
Blanking on it. But thank you.
But no, not radar.
Okay, no further questions or comments? Commissioner Sarley? Can we do a motion? Should I? Can we pull the language up on the last slide? AID us, I think.
Yes. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board amend the attached ordinance to reenact, recodify Sections 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 9.6, Appendix A, and Appendix B of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance to clarify permitted uses, maximum commercial densities, and maximum height provisions for buildings with elder care uses for properties redeveloping within the Pentagon City Coordinated Redevelopment District and other adopted planning districts as shown on the General Land Use Plan.
I think we didn't say the Columbia Pike Neighborhood. Oh, did you say Fort Meyer?
Did I read the wrong?
Do we need to say all the other stuff on there?
I think it's what's on the screen right now.
You've got to...
All right, I will start again.
...with the Columbia Pike Revitalization District, and then everything after that.
All right. I move that the Planning Commission advise the county board to amend, reenact, recodify Sections 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, 6.5, 9.6, Appendix A, and Appendix B of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance to clarify permitted uses, maximum commercial densities, and maximum building heights for buildings with elder care uses for properties redeveloping within the Columbia Pike Special Revitalization District, Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Special Revitalization District, Fort Meyer Heights North Special District, Green Valley Village Center Special Revitalization District, and the Pentagon City Coordinated Redevelopment District, all as shown on the General Land Use Plan as shown in Attachment 1 of the staff report.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification, it's the recommendation that the county board amend, not advise.
I don't have to read it again, do I?
No, you don't. You don't. It's just a point of clarification that we're using the word recommend. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kieran. Okay, any additional comment on this? Wonderful. Let's vote. By the way, there's 12 of us. Last time I said 13, but there's actually 12. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Kieran?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Striner?
Aye.
Gibbata?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Berkey?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
The motion carries 12 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Item number three is a site plan to facilitate construction of a new 10-story hotel and a new 11-story multifamily residential building with brown floor retail at 3200 Wilson Boulevard, known as Bingham Center. We have Courtney Badger, our planning staff, to present this item this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Just give me one second to get this pulled up here. Okay, good evening. I'm Courtney Badger with the Planning Division. Tonight, I'll be giving a presentation on the behalf of county staff on the Bingham Center project. The Bingham Center proposal consists of two items, an ordinance of vacation to vacate a portion of a public alley, and a new site plan to facilitate the redevelopment of the site with two new buildings, a hotel and a mixed-use residential building. The site is located at 3200 Wilson Boulevard in the Clarendon Revitalization District. The site is currently developed with the old Silver Diner Building, the lot Beer Garden, a couple retail buildings, and a service parking lot. The site plan includes the majority of the block, but does not include the southeast corner, which is the site of the Joyce Motors Site Plan that was approved earlier this year in February.
Chair Patel, I interrupt. Can we have the presentation put up on the screens?
It's showing up in the corner, but not like our full screen. Thank you.
The applicant is proposing to construct two new buildings, a hotel on the northern portion of the block and a mixed-use residential building on the southern portion of the block. The hotel is proposed to be 10 stories in height with 229 rooms, a penthouse amenity space, and a ground floor café. The residential building is proposed to be 11 stories with 290 units in ground for retail. Both buildings will be parked with a new underground parking garage. The hotel will be parked at a .35 parking ratio and the residential at a .7 parking ratio. The applicant is requesting zoning modifications for additional density, reduced parking, loading, some design requirements, and density exclusions. The applicant is requesting zoning modifications for additional density, reduced parking, loading, some design requirements and density exclusions. There's also a proposed vacation with this request, and you can see part of the vacation shown on the screen here. This is a close-up of the northern portion. And then this is the southern portion. This is a vacation of a public alley between Wilson and 10th Street North. Few things to note about the site layout. In conjunction with the Joyce Motors project that was approved earlier this year, the applicant will be constructing a new 10th Road North that connects Wilson Boulevard and North Irving Street and also a new alley that runs north and south that provides access to the parking and loading. Additionally, North Irving Street terminates prior to reaching Washington Boulevard. This is part of the current condition of the site. North Irving Street was closed off during the county's Clarendon Circle renovation a few years ago. In the resulting space between the end of North Irving Street and Washington Boulevard, the sector plan calls for a new Irving Plaza that will be provided with this project, the design of which is subject to a post-approval community process led by the Parks and the Department of Parks and Recreation. The subject site is subject to the 2022 updates to the Clarendon Sector Plan. The majority of the sector plan guidance is codified in the zoning ordinance. I pulled out a key, a few key guidelines from the sector plan that are applicable to this site that I'll run through fairly quickly for the sake of time. First, the sector plan identifies two building stepbacks on Wilson Boulevard. They're shown in purple here and circled in red on the map. The purpose of these stepbacks are to ensure that the buildings have a pedestrian scale and that they're contextually appropriate to the adjacent structures. In this case, North Side Social, which is across the street. The applicant is proposing a deviation from the location and the depth of the stepbacks called for in the sector plan. On the northern building, they are proposing a triangular carve-out into the building. And on the southern building, they're proposing a stepback along the whole frontage instead of just at the corner. The proposed stepbacks are not in the exact locations called for in the sector plan, and the stepback on the residential building is not quite as deep as what's called for in the sector plan. However, staff feels that the proposed stepbacks are meeting the spirit and intent of what the sector plan is trying to achieve. Second, the sector plan has a maximum height of 110 feet at this location with tapering on the southern building, which the applicant is meeting. The sector plan also calls for 60% commercial use on the northern parcel, which is being met by the hotel use. And the sector plan calls for residential or mixed-use building on the southern parcel, which is also being met. As mentioned previously, the sector plan envisions an Irving Plaza abetting the building on the east. This is to be approximately 6,200 square feet. And the sector plan really identifies this as a way to maintain pedestrian connection from Lion Park and Ashton Heights, which are civic associations to the south up through the site into the Clarendon Central Park area to the north. And this is being provided with the project. Finally, the sector plan identifies service functions and loading to occur on the new 10th Road and the new service alley, kind of consolidating the service and loading functions onto a T-shaped sign, if you would, on the new streets being proposed. And this is where we saw the most project evolution. On the left, you'll see what the applicant was originally proposing. They were going to locate the loading for the hotel on North Irving Street. Identified with the red blocks and push kind of the back-of-house uses onto North Irving, resulting in some limited transparency adjacent to the future Irving Plaza. The applicant has since revised their ground floor plan for the hotel and to locate the loading on 10th Road North and has agreed to have transparent windows into the kitchen, providing transparency into what could be a unique experience for pedestrians and people in the plaza to have this type of activation along that public space. Here are the resulting facades for North Irving Street. The original submission is on the top. And the current submission on the bottom, you can see on the very right-hand side, which is north, is the entrance in and out of the ground floor café. And as you move to the left, moving more south along the facade, the yellow box are now transparent windows. The ground floor windows will go into the working kitchen. You'll be able to see in and out of that. And then the area boxed out in red is the area that's conditioned and required to have a decorative treatment. Finally, this project is earning density through providing community benefits, including participation in the green building incentive program at the point three five FAR level. They will also be providing 15 onsite committed affordable units, five-one bedrooms and 10 two-bedrooms. It will be available at the 60% AMI level. The applicant will also be funding the public design process for the future Irving Street and will be constructing what comes out of that community process. They will also be giving a monetary contribution towards public space improvements in Clarendon. And then finally, they will be providing a new 10-foot streetscape on the west side of Wilson Boulevard as a part of an off-site transportation improvement. The project furthers all three overarching goals of the sector plan by improving the quality of the public realm, creating accessible and connected places and maintaining a rich mix of uses. So with all that, staff recommends that you find the ordinance of vacation substantially in accord with comprehensive plan and that you recommend approval of the Bingham Center Site Plan to the County Board. So I will stop sharing my screen, but happy to answer questions when the time comes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Let me set the timer for the next presentation.
I'm an attorney with Tardern Nova Law, and I'm delighted to be with you this evening. I've got with me my client, Mr. Tom Schultz, our project architect, Chris Gordon, and we've got the whole pan of play of folks on the virtual internet. This case is a long time coming. This application was filed before the sector plan was updated during COVID. The consolidation began many, many years ago and sort of slowly occurred. Next slide. And you're familiar with the site, I'm sure. It's a Silver Diner site. It's a triangle, a giant triangle that's been carved into more triangles. So our particular site is essentially two triangles that carved a rectangle out for the Joyce Motors site that you've seen maybe six, seven months ago. But the site presents challenges, any triangle does, and particularly this site. I'm going to get through those in just a minute. Why don't we go to the next slide? You can see for yourselves. I'm sure you're familiar with the site, but the site is really kind of from 1950s suburbia, lots of asphalt, lots of curb cuts, poor sidewalks, a few street trees, streetlights. The urban experience we expect here in Arlington is not there right now. But we hope to transform this site to a really exciting gateway to Clarendon. Next slide. So here's the details. Courtney let you in on most of them. 229 hotel units, point three four parking, 11-story multifamily residential, 290 units, point seven parking, about 16,000 square feet of retail. And I alluded to this earlier with the fact that the site has no sidewalk. It really doesn't have the land area to provide for the things that are appropriate in a place like Arlington right now. So approximately 38% of our site is being given over to things like widening Wilson Boulevard, providing wider streetscape, street trees, a new 10th Road North, a new alley. Around the whole periphery of the site, more than a third of the site is turned over or given over to provide those public amenities, which presents additional challenges because it's a fairly tight site. Next slide, you're familiar with this as well. This is your sector plan that you updated a couple of years ago. We're meeting these requirements. Next slide. The taper on 10th Street, as you know, goes from 75 to 110. We're respecting that. Here's a little bit of our ground floor. Courtney mentioned our loading dock, which we moved. We spent many, many months talking about that. The hotel is not just a hotel, it's a business, and it needs to be filled up every day, and people give reviews and all that. So how it operates is really critically important to the success of the site. So we did spend a lot of time, but it was a pleasure to work with staff and to resolve these issues. I thank Courtney, Badger, Rob Gibson, and also Mike Aluski for working with us and the SPRC as well to come up with solutions that we think work both for us as a developer and an owner and operator and for the community. You can see 16,000 square feet of retail on the residential building, so it's quite, I think will create a quite rich pedestrian experience. Landscaping, we've got a lot of trees, got a lot of green space. We worked extremely hard to get to 15% tree canopy and every crack and corner in this place that can support a tree has one now. But we think it makes for a very nice biophilic design and quite good experience for folks who live and walk in the area. Next slide. Let's get into the architecture just a bit. As you can see, this is a bird's eye view. You're kind of on a balloon above North Side Social. The multifamily residential building is to the right, predominantly masonry, lots of detail, lots of intricate brickwork, rich colors, rich texture, kind of a feeling almost of post-industrial, maybe. But we're quite happy with the design. We hope you feel the same way. We got many good comments during the process from neighbors, civic groups and the like. On the left is the hotel. As you can see, it's a close-up of the hotel. We have some metal panels and metal banding. That's copper color. It may not be copper, but it will be metal. Two colors of masonry to set off these sites. Ground floor with the amenities you'd expect in a hotel such as, you know, restaurants, public spaces, meeting rooms and the like. So this will be a first, the one and only hotel in Clarendon, and we're very excited about it with new street trees, streetscape and the like. Next slide. Just a close-up of the intersection of the new 10th Road, the hotel being in the background and the corner of the multifamily residential in the foreground, and you can get a taste of the brickwork, the intricate brickwork, the richness. We think of the masonry, metal panels and that dark color, I think, which gives it a bit of an industrial feel. Next slide. This is hovering above 10th Street, looking down. You can see the taper I described, 75, 95, 110, green areas, terraces, roofs, and the like. Next slide. This is from the point 10th Street on your right and Wilson on your left, where they can make some bold, strong statement here at the corner. We're very excited about the architecture. Next slide. The site is very sustainable and lead-friendly. We're going for lead gold at point three five level. We can go into details. We have our sustainability consultant on the phone as well. Next slide. Community benefits, I think this is one of the real critical aspects of this. You're getting a new Irving Street Park, Irving Street Plaza, which will be developed as part of this project contemporaneously. We won't be waiting around for years and years. That's part of the condition that we'll do this at the same time as the hotel, and we want to do that because we don't want construction to occur and we don't want the the park lingering as some other projects sometimes do. We're going to build a new 10th Road and Alley. We're going to widen Wilson Boulevard, new streets, sidewalks, streetscape, street trees, the whole nine yards around the whole periphery of the site. 15 ADUs, committed ADUs, improvements to 10th Street and Irving, and also some very nice improvements across Wilson Boulevard that have been recently negotiated with staff. So where the Dominion Power substation is with a very tight sidewalk and frankly, just not a great experience, we're going to be widening that substantially. We're also going to be putting in street trees, street lights, landscaped areas, and really dramatically improving the other side of Wilson Boulevard in addition to our own. And lastly, we just think a hotel is going to be a great addition to the community, to the Clarendon area, and we're extremely excited about it. So we'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have one speaker this evening. Mr. Bernie Byrne.
Hi, Mr. Byrne. We are ready when you are. He was on. Mr. Byrne, Dr. Byrne, Bernie Byrne? Maybe you can unmute yourself so we can hear from you?
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, right. Thank you. The 4.1 submissions landscape plan does not describe the ground covers and perennials that the applicant would install. To allow the public to make informed consent comments, the applicant needs to add this information to the 4.1 submission before the County Board's meeting on the site plan. The information must contain the species, numbers, and locations of all such plantings. The numbers perhaps not, but the species and the locations. I've requested this repeatedly during the site plan review process from the very beginning, but the applicant has refused to provide it. To comply with the County Board's 2016 Monarch Pledge, the applicants, the plantings must contain plants that support pollinators, especially common milkweed. This is the acupuncturist, this is necessary. This is the only plant at which monarch butterflies prefer to lay eggs and which survives in Arlington's natural area. Tree trenches, ledges, and the green roofs should contain common milkweed. To increase biofili, which this building really lacks, native vines should hang from the roofs, vines and ledges and balconies. They should also climb on trellises from the ground and from ledges. The project will contain a park at the end of North Irving Street. However, park construction will destroy it at its northern end, a natural area on county property that contains common milkweed and other pollinate plants. County created that only three years ago when it added a green street element when improving the traffic flow at Clarendon Circle. The applicant and the county must protect and preserve this natural area to support the monarch butterflies, the county's monarch pledge. You need to create a park and not a plaza, and you don't follow what the applicant is showing. The Department of Parks and Recreation will conduct a public engagement process that will determine the use and design of the park or plaza. Please recommend that the Planning Commission review and the County Board approve DPR's preferred use and design for this public space. This will provide a public review of DPR's plans, which otherwise you can be certain will not occur. DPR typically does these landscape plans, may show the Parks and Recreation Commission, but they can't make a decision, only the County Board can. This is the fate of this project and of that public space. It needs to come back to you and to the County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any commissions? Commissioner Ellen, tell me?
Yes, this was also heard for the Transportation Commission last Thursday night. And to cut to the chase, it was, the commission voted to approve it unanimously with one amendment before I get into more of the details. And that amendment was to recommend a pedestrian crossing at the new 10th Road North across Wilson Boulevard. It's something that also came up at the SPRC. I did send around a summary of the meeting that all of my fellow commissioners now have, but again, to quickly summarize, parking, there was some discussion about the relatively high parking ratio of point seven for the residential unit, given that there's a 93 walkability score and it's near the metro station. But the applicant gave reasons why this combination of neighborhood concerns, market studies, and uncertainty because of COVID and the impact on work from home for that. We raised construction issues with the sidewalks would remain open during construction, which is a concern of the neighborhoods. There are, of course, there'll be every effort made to keep sidewalks open, but no guarantee when the actual construction goes on, other than there will be at least one sidewalk along Wilson Boulevard on one side or the other during the construction. Question was asked whether there would be a bus shelter on Wilson Boulevard for the bus stop there, and the answer was no. For pedestrians, again, this was where part of one of the longest discussions was on the need by the, the commissions felt that there was a need for a mid-block crossing there. And that's because the lobby for this new building, for the residential building, will be on Wilson Boulevard right across from the new 10th Road North is North Side Social. There is also another preserved building to the west of North Side Social that eventually will, I would presume, be something different than a tire store now. But they were preserved as part of another project in Clarendon. They will be magnets for people from both the apartment building and from the hotel. And people will be crossing that street. And having them walk all the way to the end of the block and then doubling back to get to North Side Social is not the way people are going to move. This is a desire line. With us, the recommendation to have a crossing there. Otherwise, the project was very well received by the Transportation Commission, and that pretty much summarizes it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissions that are speaking on this? Okay, I'm going to go to Commissioner Sarley, who headed this project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have much to add other than the report that I sent out the other day. I think I want to highlight staff's participation in this. They were very instrumental in working with the applicant to get the project to the result that it is. Other than that, I think I'll let my colleagues ask questions and we'll go from there.
Thank you. So any questions overall? Any questions from anyone? There's been a lot of movement on this project and a lot of good progress, I think, is what we all understand. Any?
I have something. Why don't I start? Okay. Thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you for a lovely project. I will say that what often is heard by this Planning Commission in particular is the concern around affordability and the number of affordable dwelling units that are available onsite. I want to first commend you as a project that's actually brought onsite committed affordable housing that's available. We haven't seen that in the last couple of projects, and this particular commission has voiced a lot of concern, particularly in places that are very transit-rich, like this particular project. I will also say aesthetically, it's a really beautiful project and the changes that have been made through the iterations of this project have been really wonderful and I appreciate, you know, you're taking the community input so seriously, right? so seriously, right? And so thoughtfully into your process. I just want to say this one thing. I think that you guys have really done more than most on the affordable housing issue. And I commend you for the 15 units that you've put on at this site. One thing I want to say is we have 8,000 renter households in the county and at 30% and below, and only 1,600 units affordable at that level. So I really do appreciate it. I don't want you to take this as, you know, as a lack of appreciation for the 15 at 60%. The problem in this county doesn't seem to be at the 60% level. It's at the 30% level. And so I, you know, the Arlington Community Foundation has this remarkable shared prosperity initiative in which they are sounding the alarm for affordability in our, in our community at the 30% level and are directing that 10% of projects come in at the 30% level. And so that would be 29 units here. We don't have any at that level. And certainly it is a shared goal that needs to be attained by government and private industry. I just wish that we would start to see more at that level and particularly at such a beautiful site. And, you know, irrespective of whether it was beautiful or not, the opportunities that lie at a location like this for families that would need the amenities. I would like to see some more of that. So that's my only comment, I think, for this entire project is the affordable housing concern for me. Commissioner, tell me.
I want to add one point. I concur with Chair Patel's comments there. This is a great project. I'm very enthusiastic about it. Having lived in that neighborhood for a long time and watched Clarendon evolve. This is like filling in the last areas that desperately need redevelopment. And this is a fantastic project, which is on the corner of one of the ugliest intersections left in the Boston frozen corridor. So you're definitely moving in the right directions. I note that for my fellow commissioners, that the parking on this is, it's one, it's a one garage shared by the two buildings. So there's flexibility there as we learn more about what the needs are to go back and forth. But even beyond that, people know, you might know that there's two triangles. There's also that rectangle, which is the Joyce Motor Site, which we have seen before. My understanding is that there are knockout panels, that that garage in the, in that building will be able to be shared with this, these buildings, which I think, again, helps with the flexibility, helps us that we don't have to have the weirdness of somebody driving from one garage to another because they're using different buildings, different retailers. So all around this, it's many of our long-term desires and goals for that particular thing. So again, I want to commend you and call everybody's attention to this feature of it. I also want to reiterate that if you decide you don't need as much parking, you have plenty of opportunity to reduce it. Save yourself an extra level. If you don't want to build it, we're fine with that. So, you know, that too. Anyway, again, the architecture, this is excellent architecture. This is a really sophisticated looking building. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I also feel that given, you know, some people might be concerned that it's a lot of height right against Wilson Boulevard. Remember, across the street, those buildings are preserved and that Dominion Substation is not going anywhere. This will by no means ever look like a canyon. It is exactly a great place to have height because of what's not going to be across the street there. So all around, I think that you've done a wonderful job here and clearly I'm very enthusiastic about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Geren, Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Givada, Commissioner Berkey, and then Commissioner Schreiner. So I hope you all remember the order.
Thank you. So I'm going to stick with the comments on housing. And also I do think this looks beautiful. I think it's really testament. Staff did a great job. Applicant did a great job. RSPHC chair did a great job coming up with something that sort of, it's a very constrained site. My only question is the staff report talks about two bedroom units being family units. And that's a bit of a change for me. Full disclosure, I used to be an affordable housing coordinator. I always think of family units as being a little bit larger. So this isn't really to the applicant at all. But I do want to make sure that as we have this discussion about family units in the county, we're definitely looking at at least three bedroom units. Thanks.
Commissioner Peterson?
I wanted to echo that. I had the same question. When we were looking at the Pentagon City Sector Plan, the plan specifically calls out three bedroom units as part of like the family sized unit, you know, desire for the plan. So obviously this is not Pentagon City, but I think we do like seeing the larger size units as well. I speak as a family of five, living in a two bedroom plus den. So we treat it like a three bedroom, but it's a tight fit and we make it work and we love where we live. But, you know, we definitely need that extra den as a family of five. I did have a question about architecture. Should I ask that? Thank you. So we are looking for pedestrian scale. And yet the step back is at the fifth floor, which I don't tend to think of as being pedestrian scale. So if staff can kind of speak to what their standard for pedestrian scale is, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, let me pull up the rendering again. So when we evaluated this, we took into account the context of where it was. So we took into the context, the, where it was, being at a pedestrian scale. It is at the fifth floor, which is a floor above where the sector plan calls for it to be. The, that, there also are canopies at the ground floor level that provide a pedestrian scale that we felt like kind of satisfied that requirement. And then the applicant and their justification for having the setback, not just at the corner, but spanning the whole facade, was to allow them to get more units, residential units in the building, which we felt like was a compelling argument to kind of allow for that reduced setback at the higher level. So that's kind of some of the considerations we took into account when evaluating that.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And I'll say I am comfortable with the extra flight because you're doing the onsite affordable housing. And so to get the extra units in the building and then you gave us affordable housing. So I think that's a good compromise. Thank you.
Commissioner Givada?
I just want to note, as my previous commissioners have noted about the affordable housing units, I think it's a step in the right direction and something I haven't seen since I've come on board. So I appreciate that. Of course, we'd prefer to have three bedrooms and 30% AMI, but I think this is a step in the right direction. Just a quick question. In terms of 15% tree canopy, I know that's sort of the minimum. Is there a reason why we didn't have more coverage?
Well, it's, it's really a trade off between the building, the setbacks you want, the streetscape you want and the like. And so I, I mean, if you had a smaller building, if your building was stuck in the middle, you know, and you had a 30 foot sidewalk, you could put more trees in, but given the streetscape standards of Arlington County, there's limited opportunities. We have them on the roofs. We have them in, on every street, sidewalk, every place you can put a tree, we put one. And so I guess technically, if you made the building smaller and you had a, you know, big park there, we are building a park. As a matter of fact, we just don't get credit for that. So for example, the plaza, the park we're building immediately adjacent to the hotel is offsite. So we don't get credit for planting those trees. Wilson Boulevard, we're putting trees on the other side of Wilson Boulevard. Again, offsite. Some of these street trees, offsite. So there are a lot of trees. There's a lot of green space. But the county doesn't count them in their calculations, every single one of those. So given what we have now, I think this is a dramatic improvement, dramatic increase in the number of trees, bushes, shrubs, the whole nine yards. You've got a sea of asphalt right now. And every square inch you can put a tree on this site, we're doing it. I'm telling you, I was on a call that lasted, seemed like forever, to try to find a place for one more tree. And so we've worked very hard with that and staff as well, very cooperative, trying to make as many places as we can find, but we've put one pretty much everywhere you can, following the streetscape standards and the sector plan for placement of the building.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And I understand it's a cost benefit analysis. And also now that you're putting more affordable units, it's, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Berkey, then Commissioner Schreiner?
Sure. Thank you. This is a clarifying question for planning staff. Another affordable housing question. So my read of the proposal here is base contribution of cash or approximately 10 onsite, 14 offsite, or 19, 10 offsite nearby or 19 offsite units, right? Plus the 15 onsite CAFs for the bonus density. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, great. So, um, you know, I'd associate myself with this whole conversation about housing and thinking about Chair Patel's comment with regards to the income levels that we have these units at. And I will borrow a phrase from Commissioner, we are to say, the following question does not represent my view of what we should do, but I'm sort of curious. You know, I know with regards to Barcroft and other developments recently, we've talked about income mixing, the ability to use our affordable housing program to get, you know, lower AMI units in exchange for some higher AMI units and thinking about, you know, trading different policy goals. So my question is, in thinking about onsite CAFs that the county negotiates for, has at any point staff thought about applying those income mixing principles? Because right now we're negotiating for 60% AMI units onsite. Would we ever think about maybe doing some 30s, some 70s, some 80s? Is that something that we've ever thought about as a county?
I think that's a great question, something that I am happy to take back to our planning leadership when they go through these negotiations to say, hey, we were hearing this from the planning commission. This is what the community wants. Is there any way to do it? So I'm happy to have that conversation.
Sure. And if I could just do a final follow up on that, I, I think maybe that's something that maybe this group should think about. I don't claim to be an expert in this, but I know enough to be dangerous. And I think that there are certainly policy trade offs in that approach too. It's not, you know, it's not total win-win because you also are losing some 60% units in exchange for that policy choice. So I just present it as something to, for us to maybe consider going forward. Thanks.
Let me turn a little bit. Well, first of all, I want to praise another aspect of this project. That would be the sort of sustainability side of it. I noticed that there's onsite solar generation. Very good. And all of it is in compliance with the dark sky measures as well, which is also a great thing in terms of light pollution. And 15% of those spots are EV accessible. Also very good. So moving on to my question, and this is for both. What is the plan? Could you elaborate more on the plan for the Irving Plaza? And are there any plans for Irving Street? That's a road I've gone down many a time on accident, just to find out that it's a dead end. And I would love to know if there's anything in the works for that.
So I can start off. So Irving Street is envisioned to kind of be not go as close to Washington Boulevard as it does now, if that makes sense. And it will turn to the east to connect into the other segment of 10th Road that is part of the Verizon Site Plan project that's still under review. The, for the plaza that's in between the terminus of Irving Street and Washington Boulevard, there's a condition as part of this project that the developer will fund the community engagement process. So they will work with our Department of Parks and Recreation to identify some design firms. They'll have at least two community engagement sessions. They will go to the county board with, they'll put together some designs. They'll go to the county board to get approval of the design. And then the timing has been structured as such that they will include that design into their civil engineering plans and their landscape plans. So that when the hotel is being constructed, they will also be constructing the plaza. So that's kind of the vision that it will be a community process, but it will be delivered alongside this hotel and funded and constructed by the developer.
Okay, that's great to know. So since Irving is going to be shorter, is that sort of piece that's still concrete, is that going to be roped into the plaza, if I'm understanding that right?
Yeah, so there's going to be a portion that's like right of way now. It's like road now. So it's still all going to be county owned, but it's going to be turned into a plaza. And what that looks like, if it's grass, if it's hardscape, unsure because it'll go through that community process.
Okay, perfect.
If I could just add as well, so the notion is that we wanted to deliver the park. You know, a lot of things are planned. They're talked about for years and years. We really wanted to make sure the park was delivered in a timely fashion, both for the community, but frankly, for ourselves, for the developer to make sure that it's not construction during the operation or the opening of the hotel. And so we're very excited about this. This will be, it's not huge, but it'll be quite nice, or we hope it'll be quite nice. And just be another amenity and another community benefit associated with this project.
Absolutely, absolutely. I really like that. Second, my second question is related to the mid block crossing on Wilson between 10th and Washington. Is the county or the developer opposed in any way to that crossing? Are there any sort of hurdles towards making that a reality?
Thank you. Robert Gibson, Arlington County DES Transportation. So throughout the process, we've really tried to ensure that there's a set of desire lines that can be fulfilled, not just put in the crosswalk in at the location. So in this approach, what, since the Transportation Commission's meeting last Thursday, what we were looking at is ensuring that a crosswalk could be built in the future, but not necessarily in line with this development, but more so coordinated with the growth to the west of the site.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. I know we've dealt with mid block crossings in the past and that haven't gone through. So I think it's, that was worth doubling down on. But that's all I've got.
Okay, Commissioner Geren?
So this is a little bit off these direct comments. And I see on page 34, we make reference to the equity principles. I'm wondering if we want to start thinking about making reference to the biophilic principles adopted at the same time. And that's in part because one reason we brought this forward when we did as for the county to join this network was there is a focus on canopy trees. And sometimes we can't get all those trees onsite, but the overall, the impetus for this, the reason for this is to bring nature to these sites. If we focused more on what can we get on the site and how we might do that, it might, it might behoove us all because I think it could be more win, win, win. We don't have, maybe 15% canopy trees is all you can get on the site. But maybe if you looked at it in terms of, we can get a few understory trees, we can get some vines. We can maybe have a trellis that goes along the side of the building and animate that or make that green. And a lovely way for residents who don't have backyards to maybe see the change of the seasons. I think it helps us all shift towards, I think, what the original purpose was with a lot of this tree canopy. Obviously, trees provide a lot of this green infrastructure that supports our aging gray infrastructure, but so do these other things. And this also gets at Mr. Burns' repeated comments and all of our site plans. I think it, I think this could also help us highlight the work that our natural resources team and our urban foresters do. I know they look at those final landscaping plans to make sure that we do not have anything invasive in there. And, and they look to see what trees can be kept in. Are there creative ways we might try to retain a tree? So I'm wondering if sort of daylighting that in the, in the staff report would be a way to kind of shift that focus on tree canopy more towards where we're going, you know, or a sort of paradigm shift on this. So just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley, and then Commissioner Bagley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to follow up with Commissioner Schreiner's mid block crossing and why we're not doing it now. And my concern here is that proverbial path of desire will happen as soon as that place is open. And I, you know, I'm just nervous about the safety of the pedestrian crossing through the mid block, which inevitably it will happen. So I guess the question is, why delay?
Right now, DES has not evaluated that there is that desire line to put in that piece of infrastructure. So we are recommending that it be supported in the design so that it can be put in when that desire line does occur. I understand your comment and we can take that back internally. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bagley?
Yeah, it seems like it was three to four years ago when BVSCA's executive committee was brought in to see the idea of this. And it's really exciting to be sitting here now and seeing it at this level. So thank you for all the iterations and reaching to the community and things like that. To follow up a little bit on Commissioner Geren. And I know that we don't have to at this point require a full plan of green biophilia plantings or whatever, but just to Dr. Byrne's ongoing concern about the monarch butterflies, we assume is this would be true, that you will be thinking about milkweed somewhere in the project.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. I just did that for the record. I know I asked that before, but thank you.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. I'll echo some of my colleagues who have addressed the the timing of the mid block crossing. I appreciate that staff is looking for a way to put that in place. I guess my concern is that by the time we're seeing the desired line in place, people are already making an unsafe crossing. And I'm not sure how fast we're kind of going to see that happen. And I think that, you know, I would recommend looking again, kind of echoing what Commissioner Sarley was saying, looking at doing that sooner rather than later, because it certainly seems like something that is going to be happening, in my view, sooner than later. And then with the conversation earlier with regards to the onsite affordable units, again, very appreciative with the applicant moving in this direction and putting a sizable amount of units, number of units, the makeup of the units, I think more bedrooms is better. But I appreciate the applicant moving, taking that approach kind of, you know, at the outset. And that's really something that we've are have as a constant refrain with the applicants that we have before us and something that we will you will continue to hear from us, you know, should you decide to come back for another project. So thank you for for doing that. I would like to, you know, as Commissioner Berkey said, I think, you know, looking at what we might be able to do with county resources to get us to, you know, there are trade offs, but to get us to some of the different affordable percentages. Percentage affordability that we talked about is worth considering as from a policy standpoint. Because if we're seeing that the need is all the way down at the 30% of AMI, then coming in at 60% AMI is still leaving a sizable gap. So it's something to think about. And then, you know, just one last plug for, you know, if there are any ways to get units that were more than a two bedroom as kind of the largest size and some of those CAFs, it would be met with great appreciation by this body and I'm sure by the county board. So thank you.
Okay, no further comment. Oh, Commissioner Peterson.
One final question, please. During the SPRCs, there was a lot of talk about the potential garage connection between the site and Joyce Motors to reduce the curb cuts and improve pedestrian safety. I still, I see that that is still a possible connection. And I wanted to know, like, where are we? Are we likely to get that? When is that going to get resolved? Because as much as we can approve pedestrian safety, that would be fantastic.
So I think it's difficult to say when those things will occur. First off, you have market conditions. The market is not great for financing and interest rates and all that. And so I guess we don't want to have a building that's orphaned. You open a building and then the other half doesn't come along or it comes along later. So we plan for that synergy, for that connected use. But we can't open just one side with the expectation or the, you know, only one point access. So our hope is that'll happen in the future. We're planning for it. We're spending money on it. We're designing for it. We just don't know when that's going to be, and we can't really promise at this point when that might happen. But that's our expectation. That's our hope, and that's what we're designing for.
Okay. And so do I understand if if you design it for with that purpose and you build your building and then six years later, the other building gets built, you could open that access?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sar.
I'll just make a really quick, associate myself with Commissioner Tenley's. Kudos, and I would encourage staff to always be looking for these and the applicant to always be looking for these connections. I think, you know, saving the square footage on a ramp and double doing it is just absolutely brilliant. And, you know, given the real estate value around here, that's not loss on anyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so Commissioner Sar, we're ready for a motion. Ms. Patrick, can we put the motion? And we would need the vacation first.
Yeah, if I could get the official motion instead of risking reading the wrong one.
I think Ms. Patrick is putting it up on the screen for you. So first, the finding.
All right, I will begin by, I recommend that the plan, no, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board find that the ordinance of the vacation, a vacation to vacate, that seems redundant.
So I think it's I I move that the planning commission find.
I move that the planning commission find. Do I need to say anything about the county board? No. That the ordinance of vacation to vacate a 1,429 square foot portion of a 12 foot wide public alley allocated between Wilson Boulevard and 10th Street North adjacent to 3,200 and 3,240 Wilson Boulevard, RPC numbers 19 dash 003 dash 006 dash 007 and dash 013 and two, a three comma, a 3,171 square foot portion of a 12 foot wide public alley located between Wilson Boulevard and 10th Street North adjacent to 3,258 and 3,260 Wilson Boulevard and 3,211 and 3,217 and Street North and RPC numbers 19 dash 003 dash 002 and dash 003 and dash 005 and dash, no, dash 015 and dash 016 and 3, a 1,586 square foot portion of a public street and utilities easement on the south side of Wilson Boulevard and the west side of North Irving Street. A property identified as 32,000 Wilson Boulevard RPC numbers 19 dash 003 007 and dash 008 and dash 013, all with conditions are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan of Arlington County, Virginia.
Thank you. Steinberger. Steinberger seconds. I don't think that we need any additional comment, right? No discussion? Perfect. Let's go to a vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Striner?
Aye.
Gavada?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Berkey?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries 12 to zero. Commissioner Sarley, can I ask you to do the second one?
Yes. I move that the planning commission recommend, no county board, recommend approval of the attached ordinance for the Bingham Center site plan.
Okay, wait. I remove that the planning commission recommend that the county board approve, right?
So I do have the county board.
On this one, you need the county board. First one, you didn't.
I recommend that the planning commission. No.
Yes.
I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board approve the attached ordinance for the Bingham Center site plan, SPLN 2 dash 00009, SP number 467, to permit construction of approximately 5.10 FAR, including up to 254,097 square feet of residential floor area, 290 dwelling units, 1,000, 143,564 square feet of hotel floor area, 229 rooms, and 16,169 square feet of retail floor area located generally at 3,200 Wilson Boulevard, RPC numbers 19 dash 003 dash 003 and dash 004 and dash 005 and dash 007 and dash 008 and dash 013 and dash 014 and dash 015 and part of 19 dash 003 dash 002 and dash 006 and dash 009 and dash 016, with modifications for additional density, reduced residential and retail parking ratios, density exclusions, design requirements, and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed development.
I'll second.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Lynn Tellme seconds that one.
And I've amended motion.
Okay.
To the motion.
Yes.
I I move that the planning commission add the following language to the staff motion to the end of this motion and add as part of this project, a pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Wilson Boulevard and the new 10th Road North.
So second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Steiner. Do you think we need additional?
Yeah, it's for all the reasons that I discussed and actually, my fellow commissioners have also raised. And as Mr. Gibson had responded to.
Okay, so we need to vote on the motion as amended. All right.
First, the amendment. I think we vote first and then the main motion.
Yes, first the amendment. So Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Striner?
Aye.
Gavada?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Berkey?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
The motion, the amendment carries 12 to zero. Now the motion as amended. Okay? Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Striner?
Aye.
Gavada?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Berkey?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Robertson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Motion as amended carries 12 to zero. I think that's it for this project, yes? Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for a very beautiful project.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay, so that is everything substantively tonight. Now we can move on to PC business.
I have one more item.
Oh, we have to read item four. Thank you.
And I need to read this deferral before on the agenda, before Matt does his presentation. So item number four, this item has been deferred to the October PC hearings. The planning commission will not discuss, vote, nor provide recommendations at this time. This was a new site plan to construct a four story assisted living facility operated by Sunrise Senior Living located at 716 South Lee Road. There was a rezoning and a site plan. Matt Pfeifer will present a deferral report for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. My name is Matt Pfeifer with Planning Division. So this item was advertised for the planning commission's agenda, and so it is on the planning commission's agenda. After the advertisement of the planning commission notice, we were informed by the applicant that they had, they were requesting deferral to the October meeting. We were able to pull the ad from the county board advertisement. Therefore, while this item is on the agenda, the planning commission does not need to make a formal recommendation to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so PC business. We, there have been several emails that have been sent around. Let me start with Commissioner Peterson for SPRC.
Thank you. Yes, I sent around the updated SPRC list of who's doing the projects. So thank you to Commissioner Sarley, who has recently accepted a new project, and to Commissioner Patel for agreeing to help chair the YMCA project when Commissioner Garen unfortunately leaves us at the end of the year. So thank you both. We have two rosters to approve and amend tonight. So colleagues, you recently received the proposed SPRC subgroup roster for River House. Can we pull, I think we have to pull that up, please. Madam Chair, I ask for your unanimous consent in approving these rosters once it's up. So here we have River House. So unanimous consent to approve.
Any objection? No objection? So that River House SPRC roster is approved. Mr. Pfeifer, can we just change my email address on that?
Yes, I think we did. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, okay. And then we have colleagues, you recently received a proposed SPRC subgroup roster amendment for the Red Lion Inn. Madam Chair, I ask for unanimous consent to amend the previously adopted roster.
Okay, any objection? Good, the roster is adopted by unanimous consent, as was the other one. PFRC, do you have anything to add? Do you have anything?
Nope, we're quiet.
Perfect. Aug, do you have anything?
There was a meeting scheduled for September. That meeting is canceled. There are going to be meetings in October, November, and December. I don't have the specific dates, but notice will go out. Once I have the specific dates or I'm reminded of them, I'll send an email as well.
Perfect, thank you. Zoko, anything?
We have a joint LRPC Zoko meeting on September 19th on the Langston, Plan Langston Boulevard.
Okay, LRPC.
I sent around a list of quite a number of LRPC meetings that are coming up through the end of the year. It's pretty much three, at least three a month to the end. One will be joined as Commissioner Sarley just mentioned, so please read my my email on that rather than go through every single one of them. I may be asking some to help out in chairing some of those, given how many are coming up. So beware if I approach you. Thank you.
That's it. Oh, we have the July meeting minutes. I seek unanimous consent for adoption of the July 3rd.
And six.
And meeting minutes. Any objection? Okay, seeing none, the July 3rd meeting minutes are adopted. And I seek unanimous consent for the adoption of the July 6th meeting minutes for RPC hearing. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that July 6 minutes are approved and adopted as well by unanimous consent. That's the end of it. Listen, we make this look easy. Certainly, it is not. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for all your hard work and making these meetings successful. Miss Commissioner Lynn Tellme will be presenting the items that came before the planning commission tonight to the county board on the September 23rd, 2023 meeting. Thank you very much. Take care. This meeting, planning commission stands adjourned.